Are we streaming?
And then I'll switch it so that for our regular meeting.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, not not for this meeting, but that's but if we can get it streamed. Yeah, stream it will stream in the regular meeting and so once we start. All right, so uh welcome to the committee whole meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five at five thirty. Not five. I was pretty lonely at five o'clock sitting here, I didn't read. Usually at five, it's usually at five anyways. So. So I'd like to recognize the traditional territory of our treaty eight partners and the communities of Fort Nelson First Nation and Prophet River First Nation. Uh we further recognize the rights provided in that treaty and celebrate the contribution during presence of the Maiti people in our region. Uh please be aware that tonight's meeting is available to the public. And is being recorded. Okay, are there any additions to this? Counsel staff?
No, yes, spare, I'll just just discuss with councilly budget schedule.
That's all. Six point one. Budget schedule, budget meeting schedule, I guess. I was here by myself a little bit before you, John. Okay, um, public comment, Perry, is there anybody online? No, we're not online, so I guess. We're online, we're just not streaming, okay, so adoption of the agenda, is everybody okay with the agenda the way it is updated? Okay, so the first report is zero one twenty five, committee, the whole animal responsibility by law engagement outcomes for discussion.
Um, so as we see, this was a bit of um a long process from the last time you guys saw the draft by law. Um, as requested by council, we did do a survey and an updated by law, however, due to evacuation and activities over the summer, um, we didn't circulate the survey until fall. Um, so once we did, we ended up getting a decent um response rate for our online server, as far as our online surveys go, and these are the responses provided. Um, we took a look at all the responses, provided you the um data there and did a summary of um the comments from it. And going through all that, we can walk through kind of by topic if that works for you guys and allow a chance for comments and feedback, if that works.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so if we wanted to start with our behavior based animal control versus the breed specific. Um, we had a pretty high response rate on behavior based um provisions as opposed to the breed specific ban. Um, with a few um strong responses on the pit bull issue. Um, we acknowledge that that um is a more dangerous breed. Um, though we're hoping that the behavior based um approach will encompass more breeds than just that one specific. Um, do we have?
That was the comment about the intensely communicated.
Yes, um, and it's um based on personal experience, so it would have been um yeah, personal experience related response there.
Just along the lines, talking about aggressive behavior, I noticed throughout, there's always the mention of dog, which I understand why, I'm just thinking for like future proofing, should there also be a definition for dangerous and aggressive animals, because it might not only be a dog we're dealing with that happens to be aggressive. And I know with the behavior based approach, it references a dog a lot, but is there a reason why it says specifically dog versus just animals in general?
Um, dogs and cats are the ones that we are um given the authority to address within this by law, um noting that there is a section for exotic pets. Um, anything that isn't a pet um would be handled through like an animal control or a different um avenue. But the, yeah, expanding it out to the exotic pets as per um that section in the definitions could be an option too.
So you're leaning towards writing the by law in a in a behavior based manner instead of the breed specific.
Yeah, the draft by law that we had presented had um the behavior based provisions in it, and it had taken out the breed specific.
And the feedback generally was around with the similar tone, although there were some specific.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe the response rate was. Going back, we had eighty six percent were um in favor of the behavior based as opposed to the thirteen that were breed specific.
Well, we'll see how you write that and how it comes back to us as a draft.
Yeah. Um, yeah, if that's the um supportive counsel, though, will probably bring forward that um the same provisions that were in the draft. Okay, um, so our animal control hours and enforcement related questions. Um, the general comments were people would like to see more um response outside of the current um nine to five hours kind of and on weekends. Um there were some concerns and it was kind of split whether um we would be able to effectively address the additional provisions in the by law as it is while also increasing hours and response times, so we're kind of in a mixed response um on those questions.
Does that specifically need to be in the by law? To me, that's more of a policy issue that you might change with each, you know, with with budgets and availability of people and you put it in a by law, you gotta go through the by law process, so I I wonder if that specific clause, control hours and enforcement should be in the by law or whether it should be in a policy that supports the by law.
It's currently not in the draft by law, there there is nothing outlining the hours, um, so we could address that within a.
With a policy, but you asked the question, you asked the question about what people, yeah, so. Now, I think we can address that or try to address that at least in policy.
Um, so then we did um several questions around animal licensing and um limitations, so we had again um varied responses on this one, um lots of people are going with the microchipping and they're doing their own identification processes. And are less responsive to our licensing program. Um, it does um give us a little bit more um ability to address animals at large if we do have more uptake on the licensing process. However, we don't want to make it prohibitive to people, we want to open up as many options as possible to get animals licensed.
Go ahead.
Do we have any idea how much revenue we is generated on the licensing? I mean, we might not have that up, but.
Not off my hand, but it is pretty minimal, but we can get.
Yeah, because I just am thinking that, you know, for those that think that we're charging a license fee to cost recover what it takes to run our animal enforcement, um, that knowledge would be good, because I I'm sure it doesn't even compare. Yeah, hey, thanks.
There's also more to animal licensing than than just um identification of the dog or the cat, right? It's 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 also making sure that the animals are spayed or neutered, or you know, there's different expectations in the by law that you're able to check when when or at least they don't bring the dog in and you check it, at least they're committing to it being in a certain way, right? And then if you find out differently, then well, you deal with that in your by law, but it's more than just the identification thing. But you could graduate the fees based on whether they're, you know, they're uh the requirements are are being met. For sure.
I think it'd be awkward to have a a multiple ID system, like like if you have, if you have microchipped dog who has access to reading who that dog is, how do you read it? Does our, does our?
Our animal control.
Animal control person have the scanner for that, okay, so that is helpful, so.
Um, so then they would have to know if they're not tagged with one of our licenses, they could check for a microchip. Or a tattoo.
From how far away?
Thinking of like cows. Are they chipped?
Um, so then.
With respect to that, I I mean, I don't have any any feeling that I want to get rid of that licensing system, whether it pays or doesn't pay, you know, I think there's lots of benefits from a licensing system other than you know, sort of the ones that the people responded to, I guess.
So then along with that, we can um circle back, we did discuss the last time we brought this forward, um maybe increasing fees for like impoundment services if they're not identified and spayed and neutered. Um we can continue that discussion too if we'd like at this time. Um, it wasn't part of the survey itself, but there were some responses on the general open ended ones that um did say maybe that um a higher fees for nuisance animals and repeat offenders would be a big better um a better practice for helping curb some behaviors.
Or or an incentive for those, right, for those who do do the right thing. Like, I mean, one of the things you could do is just say there's no fee for your dog, and if you bring them in, if you get the fee, if you get it in January and your dog's neutered and it's identified and I mean, pick the things that you might want to put in that, but you know, those people would come in early, they'd get the, you know, and they declare that, and it's an incentive for them then to get all of those things done, otherwise the cost of their of their license is is higher, so that's sorry, and impound it, yeah, so once, once, yeah, so those, if they're not you know, if they're, if they don't have a ticket or sorry, if they don't have a license and their impound fee goes way up, then I think that graduated approaches, as long as there's some incentives that go with it, I think is is something that I've seen work, I guess.
I like that idea too, and I know it was mentioned in the report that if for licensing specifically, like if you choose not to or if you're not, don't, if you have a unspayed or neutered pet, it's going to cost more and you can have a refund for those amounts afterwards. Yeah. And it goes along hand in hand, I think we're doing it on that end of things, we should do it on the opposite end as well. And like with the nuisance animals, higher impounding fees for sure, it's probably going to help incentivize somebody to get a better leash or what have you, right?
Or or make sure the yard is fenced properly and, yeah, because I mean, it it, the risk is an unspayed or neutered dog that's running loose, right, that's the high risk, they should be paying the highest amount, whether it's in fees be upfront for licensing or fees after, because they've actually left their animal go or the the animals got out somewhere also. And then everywhere in between, you know, from fees to zero fees to to very high fees, yeah.
Um, so the draft by law did take that into consideration, so if you that licensing is required across the board, but if you prove, if you have proof of a microchip or tattoo or other source or piece of identification, then the fee may be waived. Um, and then the other thing, when we chatted with North Paw and the animal control officer about the draft by law and some of that kind of logic behind where do you, where do you put the, where do you put the highest fees in it? The thought was if you put the highest fees at the time of licensing, it will disincentivize people from licensing, whereas, and just to your point, if you know, having a an altered animal isn't a problem until they get out and they start increasing the population, so then that's when you have the chance to interact with the owner and the animal is when they're at large and you have a penalty because they are not spayed or neutered and they're running about, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And then our by law currently has different fees for if you're um animals under a certain age or because assumably you can't fix them under a certain age, um or if they're over a certain age and altered or unaltered, there's a different difference in fees.
Yeah, and if we're not collecting huge amounts of of money, I I really think we should consider a waiver early in the year to incentivize people to come in. Yeah, January, you know, whatever, yeah. Okay. So. Um, have you got some direction from that? Okay, good.
Um, so we have spay and neuter um questions within the survey as well and provision of needs for animals. Um, just a few responses that stood out were um they want to see something done within the community to make it more affordable for spay and neuter, um just because the opportunities are somewhat limited sometimes and it can be hard to get um those lined up. Um and it might be punitive to pet owners because of our location. Um additionally, that um we were split on the cats at large um questions as well, some people thought they should be included within the nuisance animals and some people thought that cats maybe pose a slightly different um issue currently in the draft by law, cats are not included in um all of those provisions, just because they're a little bit more difficult to corral and enforce. Um so we could um based on this feedback, explore um adding more um terms in for cats. If we wanted to address that issue.
Has there been past experiences with animal control where they feel they haven't had enough mechanisms within our by law when dealing with cats? Because that's really the, we're what we're going to want to fix in it, like if there's been no need for it in the past and there's no foreseeable need, then why have a by law about it? It's kind of where I'm thinking.
I think by law's challenge with cats at large have been where people have moved and aren't no longer are no longer concerned about the cat, so they're basic, they're effectively abandoned in the community. So it wouldn't be a case of us enforcing the by law against a responsible owner who would be subject to the penalties, it's literally that they're just cats at large that have no owners.
Have no owners.
So then they get caught and then they get potentially rehabilitated and rehomed. But that's outside of the outside of our by law's ability to do anything, really, you need an owner to have a be effective, so.
You can't enforce it to the cats, yeah.
When it comes back to the spay and neuter, you know, I I um I agree with the idea of the refund, you know, potentially if if they are able to take get some time, they get a they get a refund basically because they needed to get their animal out of the community in order to have it done, and once it came back, we 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 refund them for the the higher fee. I'm 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 good with that, I don't know.
The licensing fees?
The licensing fee, yeah, yeah, refund them for that, that's what it says in here.
Yeah, yeah, I've been thinking refund for the cost of the.
Oh, yeah, no, the licensing fee, it was a higher licensing fee, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, because, yeah.
Yeah.
So we refund them for the higher licensing fee because they took some time to to get their dog or cat spayed or neutered. And then you refund them for that, and again, it's another incentive for them actually getting it done, they're paying upfront, but we're prepared to give it back to you if if you prove that the dog's been altered.
Can I just go back to the nuisance cat?
Oh, yeah, I was just the one more thing I was gonna say with the cat, you did, you might want to, I don't know if you've talked to other communities or not, but um Dawson Creek did a lot of work on cats. Yeah, so there might be some things there that you can beg, borrow, or steal, go ahead, counselor, right?
No, that I just didn't want to miss that, um that I think it, our by law needs to speak to nuisance cats in some way, because they they're they are a problem for sure. And you're kind of left on your own to deal with it and people choose different ways of dealing with it, right? So if we had some sort of mechanism to deal with it in a more humane way, maybe would be a measures that a homeowner could could use.
We can do some, a little bit more research on incorporating cats into the nuisance animals, um currently it's worded as nuisance animals, so it could be enforced um with cats as well, um but we can see if there's any cat specific clauses from other bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, were you meaning um for residential guidelines for cats of like if um that somebody in the neighborhood wanted to capture a cat, was that the kind of thing you're looking at? That's just where my my brain went when you were mentioning more humane ways.
Well, I forget what the by law says about nuisance animals, so I would have to cats, it will, I think that that we have a very large cat at large citizenship in our.
Agreed.
Your feline citizens.
Feline citizens, yeah.
And if they take residence under your porch or your what, and you know, they make quite a mess and quite a smell and you're kind of on your own to deal with that, so.
Okay.
That's what I, yeah.
Our animal control can be called in too.
Yeah.
Yeah. From remove your additional residents.
Exactly.
Hey, let's go eat something.
Not in my backyard.
Okay.
I'll just, um, so Tony quickly did a a search and for the last three years animal license fee revenues have ranged between eleven hundred and seventeen hundred dollars annual. It's a little bit higher than I thought, but. Thanks, Tony.
Thanks.
Um, all right, so yeah, we can um take a look for more stuff for nuisance cats, um if there's any need to expand that. Um, our next kind of a section of questions were our rural farming um questions. So we had the um urban chickens and the urban bees um related questions and not a strong response across the board, I don't know how common it is and a lot of people weren't sure how common it was, um so there were a lot of people that just didn't care one way or the other, um but then um a few responses would like to see if there is going to be urban chickens that we do deal with. Um sound smells, um property maintenance, um the all the provisions that went with that. Um, so there wasn't necessarily negative um comments on what was provided in the draft by law, but there wasn't really anything. Um.
Yeah, that I've seen communities that have, you know, done gone both ways, but I think this community is is unique in the bear attractive thing and uh you know, that to me, it puts me on to the negative side of bees and and chickens, even the positive side, of course, is food production for yourself, but you get again, you get into cleanliness and that comes to behavior of the owner. But this this idea that you have a backyard that that looks like it might be a you know, place for dinner for the bears, it's it's an, so there's an additional sort of thing here that I didn't see in other in other places and you know, I've seen roosters in, roosters out, roosters in with collars, you know, to keep them from keeps them, keeps them from crowing, I've I've seen, you know, I've.
No roosters in.
Yeah, no, no roosters at all, like unfortunately, John, you can't have a rooster, but a little bit you can, as long as it's called. You know, with a collar that prevents them from crowing. So, you know, I've I've seen it all over, but the difference here is, you know, a backyard full of potential dinner for for bears and, you know, I I'd like to see us keep away from that, but I'm certainly interested in in another perspective, particularly in the town limits.
I think like, didn't our our draft by law have have quite a bit of write up about what would be required if you did have a backyard chicken block and so on? That by itself actually is pretty good for the chicken part, bees, I don't see a problem with bees at all, like I've had bees in in uh as a hobby for years and and run the, I just thought I need another hobby. But I, bees are not much of an attractant if you keep a bee yard, if you look after bee yard, they're just really not. In fact, there's a couple of them that have run fairly successful uh honey production right in Fort Nelson in the last twenty years and we we've never seen a, never seen a bear uh interaction with uh beehives in town, but I think like it is like everything else, isn't it? That uh you'd have, uh if you have a a well managed bee yard you naturally will put up things like an electric fence for it anyway, even in town to keep the dogs from running around through it, the dogs that aren't running around that do get running around and um, you know, it's uh I just, I just find that bees are are like bees travel like they don't live where they live, they work all around them and so you never know where they live and you can have a a community full of honeybees and everyone's flowers pollinating their apple trees so that their apples will grow well to attract the bears and but but you don't necessarily even know where these honeybees are and they they keep to themselves.
Yeah, for me, it's just the attractive of the potential honey and and or yard not being kept properly, but I I, yeah, I've seen another community, you know, where they've had bees in their backyard and you don't hardly even know they're there, but they don't have a bear problem either, so.
And go back to the chickens.
Oh, yeah, chickens, okay.
Back to the chickens for a minute, um, so I know a couple of people in town that currently have chickens, and so if we did not, because it's our by law was silent, and so they've been raising these chickens for any number of years now, problem free. Um, so if we did decide to move forward with some sort of regulations in our by laws about chickens would those folks be grandfathered in? I'm just wondering the logistics of somebody that has been raising chickens for any number of years in town, in their yard. Um, our by law was silent and now we are, our by law by law will not be silent, and so are we going to then make them do X, Y, and Z to be able to keep, like, I don't know, or can we grandfather those people in?
Or assist them in meeting the provisions going forward possibly? Counsel.
Unless it's a ban, like, that's what you're talking about, is it bad, right? I mean, they're they're probably meeting all the provisions already. But if we say nobody can have chickens in your backyard in town, I think Council growing his question is do they get to be grandfathered, they get to have chickens because they had them before the by law change?
Yeah.
Like any other by law.
The draft um does limit the number of hens that you're permitted to keep. Um, and then it talks about containment requirements for them. Um, and then it talks about containment requirements for them, um. And I will say that we do get, um, complaints about chickens. We just have no tools to respond to those, those complaints. We basically say, thanks for your concern, but there's a, there's no mechanism under which we can even have a discussion with the chicken owner. So, um, I will just say that at any time council has the discretion to enforce or not enforce a bylaw. So if there's a desire to make exceptions for certain homeowners, then that's your, that's your choice. But it makes it difficult, especially if they're neighbors and one's got one set of rules and another has another set of rules. So it might just come down to education and then yeah, support to comply essentially. And I don't think the intention is to come in with an iron fist ever. It's always educate first and and work with the homeowner to be compliant over time, so. That's all I can say.
So I think the only thing that might be very restrictive is it says up to five hens. And I haven't had chickens myself, neighbor across the street used to, and some of these bylaws would have been nice to have. Um, but there's, yeah, like looking through it, I, I've considered having chickens myself. It doesn't seem super restrictive, but I thought like I've got a family of five, I probably want more than five hens. That's the only thing I was kind of looking at in here.
We're kind of all over the place in that one, so I guess we'll wait, we'll wait.
With, with.
Not answering these questions, but we're.
Well, with people in their community having hens as it already, I, I then, I say we do need a bylaw to help support nuisance or smells or the health of these hens in specific. So I don't want to see a very restrictive bylaw on it, but we do need something in here to help with. I had issues with my neighbor, the bears like to come in, there was no, right? So we do need something, but I just I don't want to be super restrictive either.
So we want to allow people to have chickens and we want to give them some grounds, um, to keep them.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Then we'll see what the bylaw looks like when you bring it back. Uh, you missed the.
I did.
Yeah, on rural areas versus the in-town areas.
Yeah, so this one I found had the biggest, um, range of responses, um, just in how you deal with animals in rural areas based or versus urban. Um, so there was quite a wide range of responses. The ones that would like to see more response outside of, um, the current area are, um, are more around the nuisance animals, um, and maybe less so on the dangerous, um, animal provisions. Um, so council may wish to, um, have, uh, different kind of response area for their um, urban versus rural or keep the area as it is. Or.
So does our, does our current bylaw restrict us from asking the animal control bylaw to deal with a dangerous animal outside of the boundaries? Like, does it prevent us from? So in other words, if, you know, if somebody called from outside saying there is a very aggressive dog, it's in the rural area, could we send our, our, uh, animal enforcement officer out there?
Public safety issue, it may be an RCMP response. Um, just based on what we can do within our own bylaws, um, it has to be outlined within our service area.
Right.
But.
So we have no authority. Okay. Any other questions?
Is that more of, like, is that kind of the feedback we've been getting is that would, um, the residents would like to be able to call on assistance for dangerous animals or nuisance animals? Whereas right now they don't have the ability to, or they feel they don't?
Right. It's, yeah, the nuisance animals and provision of needs, um, concerns.
All right. So it, but they're hesitant about it because they don't want to have all of the bylaws when it comes to animal, the animal by, like
They're.
Forced, like, like, we're not forced, but being at the disposal.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think if you're doing regular patrols in the rural area, costs of bylaw enforcement would be significantly higher and, and is there a problem right now?
And that was.
But to me, the bylaw should still allow us to respond to, you know, an aggressive dog or on a, on a one-off basis or, you know, on a complaint basis and, and, you know, which allows our if the bylaw doesn't even allow them to go out there and deal with it, then then we're at a loss for dealing with the dangerous dog. Whereas if at least it allows us to go out there, we don't have to necessarily patrol the area all the time, but we could respond to, to complaints if the bylaw would allow us to do that. That's, that's my gut feel of how we should deal with the rural, urban piece. Cause I don't think we're, well, I guess, nobody's calling in complaints right now. Anyway, if it's a really bad dog, they're calling us, I think, right?
Or the RCMP.
Or the RCMP, yeah.
Yeah, and one of, uh, the resident dogs at McConaughey Creek runs out to create every vehicle that comes by. And it's actually lived to be, it must be nine years old now and it's still alive. It's just amazing. And, uh, we would miss it if it was.
There's Fido. Throw him a ball.
Yeah. Yeah.
We could present, um, something of a service area that has a lessened, um, set of provisions, um, if that, um, would be a desirable response from council.
To me, it's around, it's around having a bylaw that allows us to deal with the, the one-off situation. That's for me, that's. So, and then you put, by policy, you deal with then what that looks like.
And then, yeah, it wouldn't have necessarily an impact on our patrol, um, costs.
Essentially gives us the ability to react.
Gives us the ability to react.
Versus saying we can't do anything if the bylaw.
Or that we're always going to be out there.
Yes. So we could probably have wording in there that just specifies in the rural areas that the bylaw enforcement officer, the, the animal patrol officer can react to certain hazardous needs, i.e. if there's a dangerous dog in the area, something like that, if there's animals.
Okay. Our chicken, dangerous chicken. Okay. Okay, that, uh, that takes us through that. Does that give you some good ideas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so then there are a few, um, meteor subjects there to bring back, so we'll probably bring it back again for a review before we bring it for readings.
Good.
Um, just with those, um, kind of options for service areas, um, included.
Um, cats.
And cats. The other question.
Fees.
Yeah, that, that was the other question we wanted to pose. It's not within the report, but just, um, generally around the fees. So the fees in the draft bylaw were literally the fees we've always had, um, with some, we added some categories based on the new provisions in the bylaw, but just posed the question to council if you wanted any sort of analysis on the fees relative to our cost of services so that um, it wasn't just kind of a indiscriminate amount for claiming an animal from the pound, that it might have some relation to what we pay for the service. Um, which probably wouldn't be a tough exercise, but would give you an idea of kind of what what's fair or relevant, I guess, if it's something that you'd like us to do while we're at it.
My initial response to that is is that we're not making enough money off the fees to really even be close to recovering what we're paying out in, in, uh, in enforcement or, or, and, you know, the, the impoundment and, and that sort of stuff. To me, it should be related to the incentive versus non-incentive bit. You know, what's the cost of having an animal spayed or neutered? So that, you know, they don't make a choice as well. It's cheaper for me to just pay the increased fee than it is for me to have the animal spayed or neutered. So, you know, that if the fees reflect the actual cost, right, then it's not a choice for the person to decide I'm just going to pay the fee rather than have my animal spayed or neutered, right? Or, you know, and so there's several, we talked about several different things that we might do there. Um, if we looked at the fees from that perspective, that's, that's how I would like to deal with it from the incentive and disincentive perspective. My thought. Anybody else? But we're never going to make enough money off the, off the fees to, to pay for animal enforcement. So why go through a tough exercise if it's really not going to give us a lot of information?
Yeah, and I liked your idea of having a, a fee waiver system in place. Um, I think that will really, uh, help with the intake of licensing and that could help with a lot of things.
You've got a limited time where if you meet these specific criterias, there's no fee at all. We just want you to have your dog licensed. I think, I think people will take advantage of that.
Um, another example I'd offer is like, so currently, um, to claim your dog from the pound or your dog or cat from the pound, it's fifty dollars. But that's, the pound service alone costs us twenty eight hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
So there might be some, there might be a little bit better cost recovery there. Um, and then obviously even escalation, like your fourth time in the pound, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, but we're still paying twenty-eight hundred dollars to have the service available. So, um, just kind of thinking about from that perspective on the, on the, um, you know, the impoundment. If you're, if it's your fourth time in the pound, then there should be a little bit higher cost. In my view, there should be a bit higher cost recovery for us providing that pound service. Not even taking into consideration the animal control service that caught the dog.
Yeah.
What that cost to the municipality is every month, so.
That's, that's still a tough one because do you catch one dog that month or do you catch ten dogs that month, right? It's, and it's not a money-making process, right? We certainly wouldn't want it to be a money-making process there. Cost, I mean, cost recovery is probably unlikely. But again, I agree with the graduated increased fees, you know? If your dog is not spayed or neutered, well, it costs you more for your license. Well, it might also cost you more for your impounding as well. Which gives you incentive to go out and get it done. Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, so I have a little bit different take on all of that than you do. I think, um, for myself, wherever possible, when I go to make decisions, the more information I have is always the better for me. And also when you know, as we're going through this process, I anticipate there being some community engagement. Um, so the more information that I have, like why are the fees being raised to whatever for impoundment? Well, here's what it actually costs for us to deliver this, this service. And yes, the licensing fee is not based on cost recovery. However, you know, X, Y, and Z, and right now we don't have that. So I would appreciate that information if it wasn't like a huge time, um, and human capacity issue.
Okay. Good. Budget meeting schedule.
What are the budget meeting schedule? Sorry. I was waiting for Jay to do hers, but I'm six point one.
Yeah, just real quick.
When the process of, uh, starting to work out a bit of a timeline for the budget, so, um, not going to ask council's availability here, as I know usually you don't know what it's like. Um, but if you do have any known time away or no-go dates, if you can either pass it on to corporate services or, uh, provide it so we can update the council calendar, however you want to do it. Uh, cause we're going to start throwing some doodle polls out to kind of get an idea around availability. And it's easier to pick days where we have an idea this, uh, when coun- when council might be available versus if you're away or whatnot. So just expect that, uh, in the coming, uh, week or so, and if you can provide us an update to what you do know today, and we may know things change and what your availability may or may not look like here in the, up until, um, the spring break issue time.
Which is what, March?
Twenty, I think it's spring fifteen fifteen. Yeah. Which right now we're doing a no-go at spring break this with, uh, we know availability and stuff, but.
And we'd like to have it done before that, or at least these preliminary.
Try to do preliminary stuff done before then, so then we can, after that, uh, start to do the, 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 the public open house engagement and stuff and, and have all that stuff done. So we're hoping to have the, you know, the, the bulk of the discussions done before the, uh, spring break, right?
Are we going to have a discussion probably in the future about, are we doing, uh, open hosts as we have in the past? Like last year we had record attendance at zero, so that's a lot of work, so.
Well, that's, that's a conversation that we can have a council to discuss. We, we typically get it's one of those items, it's not, it's, it's not an exciting topic and typically unless there's a, unless there's something that's if, if, if we're, if we were to be reducing a service or something or, or significant increases when you're seeing things that create some noise in the community, but otherwise, I mean, you're right, typically the past few years, it's, it's been, it's been fairly, it's been fairly, uh, quiet, right?
That said, I, sorry, that said, I really appreciate the information and how it is organized and how so I wouldn't want to see that stopped.
We still do the information. I think the information is good because we release it, we have, you know, some good information you can release online and stuff. So, so to me, that might be part of the reason why people don't come out, because the answers are questioned a lot of, like, ahead of time. We, we provide a lot of information, so the data and the information we provide would, would definitely still go, but you're right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into the open house component and um, we don't get record numbers, that's for sure.
Th- this year might be one of those exception years, particularly with the initiation of the wildfire resiliency committee and, and we'll find out this Thursday, potential projects that they might be interested in are going to cost money. A significant amount of money potentially. And, uh, you know, it becomes then just a matter of well, how do we feel those projects should be, uh, budgeted for? Is it, you know, do we want to do it sooner? If we want to do these projects sooner, there's potentially significant costs now. Or do we want to spread it out over, over time? And that, you know, but if, if, if there's general agreement, and I'm sure you'll all speak to your, to the folks that you, that you talk to, is this the year that we spend big money on, on, on some of these mitigation projects? And if we do, how do we collect that money? Is it a, is it a tax increase? Is it a cut in services? What, what, how do we, how do we deal with that? So I'm hoping that the committee will, uh, will enlighten us, um, on this, at this first meeting with respect to what they think might be done. And, and of course, the agencies are doing some things too, and so, you know, trying to marry all that together before the budget will, will help us to kind of pin that down. Is, you know, is it a high priority year to get it done, especially after last year? Or is, or is the risk the same as it has been for twenty years? We just need to, you know, continually go at it. So, yeah, so this year from that, I'm glad you brought that up. This year might be a year where, where there might be quite a bit more interest in, in what the budget looks like.
For sure. And, and our schedule has incorporated, we haven't made this is not to. It, it has incorporated the, uh, budget.
But it's a good discussion to have. On, once we figure out what it might look like.
I'm good to go. Like, yeah, it's just a lot of work. Right? Yes, I think it's, it can be valuable. I'd like quite a few new things, sitting around talking to people.
Okay, uh, six point two is some feedback on the council information package and information hub. Um, the, the two different things and, and, and whether or not there's enough. If we're getting enough information out to the public and how we're doing that.
Um, so as you're aware, we ran a bit of a trial in the late fall with, um, creating a internal resource for council to remain apprised of information as it's received. So for example, of course, correspondence always, direct correspondence to council always comes to a council agenda, but as we know, they happen every other Monday at best and sometimes seasonally once a month. So there's, there can be a delay, so we wanted to make sure that council had um, ready access to that material when it's received. Um, and the council information package has been a a long legacy activity. We publish it weekly, but frankly, it's, it ebbs and flows in terms of what we may have to include. So this week, for example, or last week, sorry, we had nothing, so we didn't actually publish a package. And it all just depends on timing. So I think the value with the hub is that it's real-time access to um, correspondence or packages or items that we flag for councils, um, convenience purposes. Um, but as we began to think about, um, the difference between the two resources, um, the hub is intended to be an internal resource, but what we may miss in not having a council information package is that flow-through of information to a public realm. So, um, some things may not be even appropriate to be putting on an agenda, like articles, news articles that we find on the web is already public information. So is it, is it appropriate that it's then highlighted on a council agenda? I'm not sure, but it's definitely not a municipal record. Um, and like monthly newsletters from some of the agencies. Um, and like monthly newsletters from some of the agencies that we routinely deal with, like N D I T or Northern B C Tourism, for example. So I mean, those are readily available online that anybody can go and retrieve them at their will. And we put them in a certain place for council's convenience. Um, but what we would lose if we retired the council information package in the public realm would be things like. Mass mailing. So lots of times we're copied on a letter that our local government sends to all local governments in B C. Um, it may be a topic that really isn't on our radar. Or that council doesn't see a need to do really anything with aside from receive for information. So we were thinking about how we might continue to ensure that those are um. Basically received in a public, in the public domain. So those could come back to a public agenda, um just in your for information section, for example. Um, some of the other material would be like the routine reports that councils requested. So. The ready report is on tonight's agenda, for example, but it may not be necessary that it hits an agenda. Maybe it's available publicly. On our website where all of our other ready information is. Um, it could still remain on your hub uh for convenience, but. In terms of being publicly available, we can feature it on our website. The rec stats, we can feature those on a monthly basis on our website. Um, flowers we send in memory of um, community members who have passed. It could be on our cemetery page. So there's places I think that we could feature the information that's still public, but just isn't on a council agenda. Cause they're not decision-making items anyways. They're, they're for reference and maybe some profile, but other than that, so. I guess that's, those, those were our lines of thinking, but this is intended to be your tool or your resource. So we. Definitely wanted to get your feedback before we made any change in process around what we've been doing. Um, so yeah, so let it open it for comments.
I didn't get to look at it till here recently, but I, I liked it. You know, I like that it was easy to get it and, and, you know, from, from my perspective as a council member. I understand what you're saying about the public though. And I think the only thing, because we did have a little discussion this afternoon about this. The only thing I think you didn't say was. Minutes from um, from some of the committees, which, which um. You know, could either come to us as um, like on a consent agenda, essentially just list them. And your ability to go and, you know, how you can go get them if, if, if that's, that's the only other thing I think that we talked about this afternoon. Uh, that I didn't hear you mention here now, so. So like I said, those could come on a consent agenda and it, it's just attached to it. So a regular agenda.
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with the process of council adopting or receiving committee minutes, but they are. Committee minutes are publicly available at any point, once they're published, of course, once they've left. The secretary's notepads and a notepad and have become a set of official minutes. Um. And we're starting a new internal process this year where. The committee, the liaisons, staff liaisons to the committees will be using the same software we do for our council agendas and minutes. To produce their committee agendas and minutes. So the notification um. Tools are there. So if you, if you're, if you uh are a member of the committee, you'll get all of the notifications that way. But if you. Have a burning interest in what the committee is doing, you can also subscribe to the committee and then be notified of. Agendas and minutes when they're created. So, um, yeah, and I think it's also like how to, how to make that. Easily accessible for people because I recognize it's not always easy to crawl through our iCompass site. Um. But we have a committee page on our website and maybe we feature. Fe- feature a quick link there for people to go and see committee agendas and minutes because. Um, yeah, that's the intention is to make, to make it as transparent as possible, the material that we're handling and, and creating. So.
Any other feedback?
I had sent my feedback via email and I copied all of um council on it, so I won't bore you with the details again. Um, but just to reiterate something that I had thought would be valuable, and I guess I'd. I don't, I guess it can't be public. I don't really know, but um very often staff changes, right? New hires and. You find out like you've walked by that person for a couple of weeks now. You don't even know they're interim employees now, right? Cause we aren't informed. And so you hear about it from somewhere else. So I just thought that on our page, it would be really great if we had just an update on. Oh, you know, person X just got hired in facilities or like whatever, just so that we. Um, can keep up to date with that.
Yeah, so every new hire, we update our contact page on our website. So new employees are listed there. Um. So it's, and it's not a problem to put it in a place of convenience for council so that you have the ability to extend those welcomes when you see them.
Yeah, and I kind of hear, like you said, like this information is available here and here and here and. I'm not going here and here and here, right? And so if there was one place that I know, okay, I'm. Somebody's inquired about this, I can go to this page because I know we've dealt with it. So. And I can go here and I can either get the minutes of this committee meeting or that committee meeting or whatever. And get that information out to the resident that has inquired or just for my own benefit. If it's like that one-stop shop. Would be hugely beneficial for me. There's just, I think we all suffer from so much information coming at us from so many different. Places that, yeah, I would really appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I've been playing with it a little bit. I, the problem is, is. I figured out other ways to find the information. So now it's going and making sure I, I'll go and. I'll find an old minute and I'm like, oh, I could have probably went and done that on the hub. So I started using the A I feature on the hub, which was really useful for me. Cause then it, I figured out, wow, it's not going to link me. It's not that user-friendly yet, but it'll tell me what file to search, right? So I, so that was really handy. Um, I didn't really think a whole lot about the information that. Isn't going out to the public, but I really liked the idea of having an email to me telling me, oh, hey, we posted this on the hub and like. Uh, cause I, I like getting all of those news newsletters, the news articles, because. Now, I don't have a chance to see it, but we've got a whole bunch of staff around here that are also looking out for us too, and that's kind of cool. Right? Like, oh, hey, by the way, council, this come up. I know you guys are busy. We're all busy. So being able to have that. Just makes us more of a team network that I think works well. I don't know how to answer to get the pass through up to the community still, but like if they could have, if we could have a council and a community hub, maybe, I'm not sure. Like this, then you could have the in-camera or sensitive information that we log into.
Hey, anybody else? Thank you for, for that. Uh, is there any? News media or the public online that needs to ask a question? See anybody on there? No? Okay, then this committee, the whole meeting is adjourned. Four minutes to the next meeting. So we ended up taking almost an hour and anyway, so we probably should have started at five.
Hi Kim, I don't know if you can hear me, but we're going to close this meeting and restart it just so that we can adjust some settings.
I don't find it cold, but of course I'm a bigger guy. No, I don't.
Those big guys are good. Well insulated.